Thank you.
Oh, sweetie time, two times, three times. Different, different production. I would love to have seen the most recent one. The choreography was crazy.
Stunning.
Yeah. Um, just. Yeah, the set was stunning.
He changed his, uh, I just saw that. It's nice. Still got the cutout, though.
Yeah.
Do you have, Nicholas, do you have a particular order?
I had them listed as Stephanie. That's six and seven.
Ah, okay.
All right, good evening, everybody. It is Tuesday, May 7th, 2024, and I'll call this regular meeting of the Berry City Council to order. Uh, this meeting is being recorded, right?
Yes.
Oh, it has been publicly, uh, uh, posted and noticed, um, online. For those of you who are joining us online, please keep in mind that the chat function should only be used for technical issues or difficulties, and we will continue the meeting if, if anything happens. If you'd like to speak, uh, please raise your hand when we take up that item of business. And, uh, and if, if, uh, you're online, please remain muted, but raise your hand if you'd like to speak. If you're here in the room, I'll ask that you come forward to speak into the microphone. That way, the, uh, TV, uh, and the online recording can hear you. Please state your name for the record, and if you have any questions about process or procedure, please ask, and we will get it sorted. As always, I'd remind everyone to participate in a civil and respectful way. And with that, that takes us to item two on the agenda, adjustments to the agenda. Are there any adjustments to the agenda, Minister?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, just one adjustment. On late Friday, after the packet had gone out, I sent the council, uh, an additional contract for approval, which is Aldrich and Elliott Contract for, um, uh, design work at the wastewater treatment facility. So I'd add that to, I'd make that item four D, little two, uh, under the consent agenda.
Four D two, okay. Councillors, do you have any adjustments to the agenda? I would just make one adjustment to the agenda. Since a proclamation isn't, uh, city business, I'll move that up to, uh, between three and, and three A, uh, recognizing the, the service of council. And then, uh, um, I did just have a few questions about the service master restoration for the city hall renovation, that, uh, move that down to D for discussion. And with that, if there are no other further adjustments to the agenda, that takes us to, uh, item three, and we have two distinguished and special guests and resolutions, uh, 2024-06 and 2024-07, recognizing the service of Stephanie Caranta and Jeffrey, Jeffrey Bergeron. And I believe the honor is yours.
Sure. Do we want to make them stand or do we? We should make everybody else stand and have them sit.
Make them come up here anyway.
Come on up, both of you. Come on up to the table.
How's that changed?
Sam, sit, sit. Sam.
Sit, sit.
Have a seat. Make yourself comfortable.
This is a hot seat, Jeff, so.
Yeah, well.
Yeah. Now we don't care.
Wow.
Who bought those chairs?
They were free.
Berry City Resolution 2024 dash zero six, a resolution recognizing the service of Stephanie Caranta on the occasion of her retirement after more than 36 years of service to the city of Berry. Whereas Stephanie Caranta was hired by the city of Berry in November, 1987, and retired on March 31st, 2024, as the recreation director after more than 36 years of dedicated service. And whereas Stephanie was a valued employee and dedicated public servant who was well-liked and respected by her colleagues and treated residents, families, and her customers with the utmost respect. And whereas, over her 36-year career, she was a friendly face to the many families and children who came to the recreation events, vacation camps, and activities that she meticulously planned. And whereas Stephanie was committed to her profession and was very rightfully proud of her professional achievements, including recognition last year for her 45 years of membership in the Vermont Recreation and Parks Association. And whereas, the community's affection for Stephanie was most recently on display at the 2024 Easter Egg Hunt, which was her last act as a city of Berry employee, and brought her career full circle since she organized the first annual egg hunt in April of 1988. And whereas Stephanie took great pride in her work at the BOR, swimming pool, parks, playgrounds, helping to ensure that generations to come will enjoy these recreational areas. And whereas, after the July 2023 flood, Stephanie stepped up and coordinated relief services and volunteers at the auditorium. Now therefore be it resolved that the Berry City Council wishes Stephanie Caranta the very best in her retirement, and does hereby declare Saturday, May 11th, 2024, to be Stephanie Caranta Appreciation Day, to express to Stephanie our most profound appreciation and sincere thank you for her 36 years of dedicated service, and wish her the very best in her retirement. And be it there further resolved that a copy of this resolution be placed in the permanent records of the city of Berry, and that a copy be transmitted to Stephanie Caranta by order of the city council this seventh day of May, 2024. And I have been avoiding my contact.
With, with incredible gratitude, Stephanie, I move.
I wouldn't even say I was retiring.
I would move approval of Resolution T zero two four dash zero six.
Second.
You have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion?
Then we all get to line up for hugs.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Stephanie, you had a, you had a word there.
I couldn't even say in the department head meeting, I was ready to retire. I said, Nicholas, you're gonna have to say it. I couldn't even say it. When you work with the public every day, it's just like, it's hard. You know, you're vested in your career, you love it, and the time was right. I'll still never stop. I'll be still, you know, volunteering, and I'll be lifeguarding, I'll be teaching swimming lessons, I'll be doing a lot of those things. But, um, you know, I've appreciated everything, met so many wonderful people, and before I came tonight, I was also, um, we gotta add a little bit of light here. I think I had, um, eight city managers in this time. I think you're number eight, Nicholas. But thank you all very much. Um, a wonderful career, and appreciate everything, and, um, I won't be a stranger.
So Stephanie, I'm gonna come present you the resolution as directed by the council, and we're also gonna present you a lifetime pass to the Berry City Municipal Pool. Expiration never. So just bring that with you and let me know if they give you any trouble.
Okay.
Little boy.
Don't look at me, Carol.
I can't. Berry City Resolution 2024 dash zero seven, a resolution recognizing the service of Jeff Bergeron on the occasion of his retirement after more than 16 years of service to the city of Berry. Whereas Jeff Bergeron was hired by the city of Berry in June 2007 and retired on March 31, 2024, as the Director of Buildings and Co- Community Service after more than 16 years of dedicated service. And whereas Jeff is a Berry native who grew up in the North End and proudly served his hometown with dedication. And whereas, over his 16-year career, Jeff led a department responsible for many of the facilities that residents interact with the most, including city hall, parks, playgrounds, and the civic center complex. And whereas Jeff after, uh, was known for appreci- whereas Jeff was known and appreciated by the city colleagues for a gregarious personality and lively sense of humor, and his inane ability to take a joke as well as to dish one out, including having his poor baseball swing memorialized for eternity in the Times Argus and the minutes of the Berry City Council. And whereas, as Director of Facilities, Jeff was integral in many of the most well-known and beloved events in the city of Berry, including the annual high school basketball tournaments at the auditorium. And whereas, after the July 2023 flood, Jeff was part of the Leadership Response Team and was tasked with helping set up a long-term shelter at the auditorium and coordinate debris removal. Now therefore be it resolved that the Berry City Council wishes Jeff Bergeron the very best in his retirement, and does hereby declare Sunday, you each get your own day, Sunday, May 12th, 2024, to be Jeff Bergeron Appreciation Day, to express to Jeff our most profound appreciation and sincere thank you for his 16 years of dedicated service, and wish him the very best in his retirement. And be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be placed in the permanent records of the city of Berry, and that a copy be transmitted to Jeff Bergeron by order of the city council this seventh day of May, 2024.
You know, the last couple of years, you know, everything that happened, the years I've been here. So I'm just going down building by building, like alumni hall. Like one of the first things I did while I was here, we had a new roof put on, and we did painting, new flooring in the second floor, painting, uh, meeting rooms in the hallways, new heating system was installed, uh, the auditorium, a new roof went on there, refinished the floor, painted the basement area, replaced the balcony chairs. Uh, BOR bought batting cages with Semperbonds money, um, put in new boards and glass with the bond, uh, closed in the score booth, and, and then the biggie, the turf went in. Uh, city hall, we had new boilers, we had, with Semperbonds money, we did a facade and roofing project in, in cooperation with the Opera House. You know, the pool, my first, my first day on the job, I went up, it was brought up, Reg J. Bear brought me up to the Berry pool, Mayor Lozong was there, and they were doing a rehab on the pool. And Tom and, and Reg turned around, looked at me, said, well, this is your job now. New playground equipment at all playgrounds in the, in the 16 years. I mean, that's, that's pretty awesome. But the thing I really want to talk about, um, batting cages. I invited Nicholas up one day to, you know, get in a batting cage, and I wanted to see what, what the boy had. He shows up with a, with a cricket willow. First off, let's, let's get you squared away here, get you a baseball bat. Once he got in there and got a few swings, he looked pretty good. I mean, I hadn't seen a swing like that since Ruth. Not Babe Ruth, Ruth that works at the coffee bar. Thank you, thank you all.
That's not going in the minutes, right?
Oh, yeah, right.
Mr. Mayor, with equal gratitude, I would move approval of Resolution 2024 dash zero seven.
So there's a motion and a second. If there's no further discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it. Motion carries, resolution adopted.
Jeff, that was very brave of you to relive the batting cage moment.
On that note, uh, I'm gonna deliver the resolution to you, Jeff, as directed by the council, and you also get a lifetime pass to those batting cages. You can work on that swing. And, uh, we, maybe we'll update the council in a year.
Yeah, I could always re-gift it.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Shouldn't.
You're West Dandel.
Yes, you will. You'll be the guy with the tan.
Jeff, Stephanie, can you post for the city's Facebook page?
Oh, nice.
Thank you.
Well, I should put the pass.
Jeff, I'm gonna get one from you as well.
Tackle him.
I was gonna say, they already know they can leave.
Yeah, they already, yeah. And it doesn't look like they're.
You're not on.
Well, next up, I have a proclamation honoring, honoring Berry City elected officials with expiring terms, recognizing that this is our, our last meeting before, uh, the, uh, well, knock on wood, this is our last meeting before the, uh, the May 14th election, so. Whereas when you're in local government, you're on the ground and you are looking into the eyes and hearts of the people you are there to serve. And whereas ground-level service to any community is a labor-intensive undertaking, requiring your whole person in the pursuit of goals, stewardship of resources, clashes of ideas, deliberation, compromise, and action for impact. And whereas it involves entering the vulnerabilities of public life through a campaign, committing to many meetings, showing up at community events, answering unexpected phone calls, responding to emails, listening, reading, learning, writing, researching, facing tests of personal principles, ethics, and values, assuming responsibility, providing checks and balances, and pursuing what you believe is best as a representative of diverse viewpoints in our city. And whereas Berry City's local officials with expiring terms include Councillor Deering, Councillor Booton, Councillor Lozong, Clerk Dawes, and myself, Mayor Hemmerich, who were selected by the voters to serve through what has been two years of considerable change and stormy weather. And whereas, all public service involves personal sacrifice, commitment, and merits recognition. Now therefore be it resolved on the seventh day of May, 2024, that Berry City recognizes elected officials with expiring terms of office for their dutiful completion of their terms and their service to our city.
Didn't know quite what to do. Am I supposed to stand?
There's no vote needed for that one. All right, that takes us to Visiting Communications. This is the opportunity to speak to an item that is not on tonight's agenda. If you would like to speak to an item that is on tonight's agenda, you can speak when we take up that item of business. Lisa Leota.
Thank you. So as Jake had said, this is his last meeting as, I think the Times Argus said was Berry's longest-serving, single-term mayor. And I, I wanted to say, um, no one knows like a partner how challenging a job really is. And so I've been there with Jake through the last four years, and I, I know how challenging this has been. Through its all, through it all, Jake has always stood up for his values and his principles and stood by those. He asked the hard questions when they needed asking, and he did the right things when they needed doing. And I know he always put Berry City residents first, and for that, I'm very grateful. Um, I'm not gonna make a long speech, but I think some of the folks here might want to thank you as well.
Oh, I couldn't have done without you, Ben.
I have two words. Thank you.
Sounds like the grandmother of this council. Always there for us, so. Yeah, it's a little chair.
It's a trick chair.
That was by design. Hi, I'm AJ. I don't know if you need my name.
I, I do for the, for the records.
AJ Jones.
Thank you.
Uh, so when, I'm sorry, I don't have something prepared. So when my spouse and I moved to Berry, October 2020, you came campaigning, uh, to our house. You were one of the few brave people to march up our death stairs in your neon green hat. And you asked us specifically what we were, were hoping for, um, for Berry, and you were optimistic, um, which is not something that a lot of politicians usually campaign on, hopes. And you listened intently about what our hopes for Berry were and are, and, um, I really appreciated that. And so when we went to cast our votes, I was amazed as we went in, uh, you actually hollered to us, AJ, Caitlin, hi! And that endeared me, uh, very greatly to you and impressed me. Over the last few years, as we have watched comfortably from our couch on mute, um, there have been countless times, um, where we have looked at one another and thought, thank God Jake is our mayor. I am so proud Jake is our mayor. You have been so approachable, even though I believe this is like the third time I'm meeting you face to face, um, you give off an air and a true genuineness of approachability. And again, that's something that I've always appreciated about you. And I just wanted to thank, thank you because you've been sincere and open and you've stuck by your morals in the face of opposition and apathy and, um, slander. You've, you've done, you've done a lot of hard work, and thank you. Thank you for being the first mayor that I've been, that I was really proud to vote for.
Thank you, Jay. I hope you stay involved in city life. John LaPage.
You got it. John LaPage. Having served on city council myself, I'm aware of the performance of what's expected of an elected official, and you've certainly done that, but more, more than that. There's an attitude and a spirit, and you've rocked it. Thank you very much.
Oh, thanks, Sean.
All right. Caitlin Burnham here. I just want to say, uh, thank you for being the best mayor I've ever had to date. You are incredibly approachable. I think you're fantastic. Uh, I'm gonna miss having you, um, on council, you know, keeping, keeping things running smoothly. So, uh, I really appreciate all the hard work and thank you for your service.
Thanks, Caitlin. Erica Rell, and then I see Joelle Mulvaney, your hands raised online, next.
Um, so Mayor Jake, we were on council together. We became friends at city hall campaigning together, and I can't tell you how proud I am of you. I've always been proud to call you my friend, my confidant. We, you stood behind me during the Black Lives, raising the Black Lives Matter flag. No matter how harebrained my ideas were on council, you stood beside me. And when I was voted out of council, you still stood beside me with, with doing Pride in Berry. I could always lean on you for advice. And you always supported me. You always supported the, the women on council, the women of Berry, and the marginalized community of Berry, and thank you. Um, and I know you'll always be there to support us, and nobody has to, to be scrolling around to figure out who, what your views are. We always know that you'll dig for the truth no matter what, so thank you.
Well, perhaps still faults some costs. Joelle.
Well, um, this is a night of gratitude. And gratitude-
Oh, my gosh, I just, I'm sorry, Joelle, I just saw my mom and sister on here. This is quite, this is quite the sabotage. Okay, go ahead, Joelle.
As I said, this is a night of gratitude, and my gratitude is, is a long coming because I've lived in the city for a long time. I'm Joelle Mulvaney from the North End, and, um, this, your, your leadership has really turned our community around in a, in a way that I've been waiting for the entire time I've been living here. And that way is to begin to balance the needs of the people who live in the city and commerce. And, and just bringing it up and, and working the way that you have in order to keep that front of mind for us is something I know that our next mayor will, will carry on, especially if it's, if it's Sam. So thank you very much, and I know where you live.
You do. Welcome, Janet Van Fleet.
And it's true, my name is Janet Van Fleet. I am so sorry to see Jake Hemmerich's time as mayor in Berry come to an end. He brought a wonderful new spirit to the city and gave me hope for a new day and a new era here. He set a tone of openness, thoughtful, and inclusive analysis of the city's needs, and a warmth and generosity that listened and talked with others, not just those in an inner circle. He was out and about among the people, going beyond lip service and poll banners about Berry as a place that values the arts. He actually came to Spa, the Labor Hall, and events at the Opera House. Thank you, Mayor Hemmerich. I hope the door you opened will allow many more folks to walk through who want to participate in the life of this small city.
Oh, thanks, Jen.
My proper height now. My name is Ellen K., and I live in Ward One. Before Jake Hemmerich served our city as mayor, he served as Ward One City Counselor, my city counselor. Jake's years of service to this city have not been easy. Jake has stood up on behalf of Berry's residents to promote both inclusion and accountability. He's brought his expertise as a planner, as well as his compassion and commitment to justice to all he has done here. In the wake of the police killing of George Floyd, and in support of the millions that stood up against racial harms and disparity, Jake urged our city to stand up for black lives, authoring a resolution that put us squarely on the side of aspiring to justice and inclusion. Not reaching it, aspiring to it, taking a step toward signaling that Berry City is a welcoming and can be a welcoming community during a time of terror and upheaval for communities of color. With Erica Rell, he championed displaying a flag declaring that black lives do indeed matter at a time when violence against black people and communities indicated that their lives did not. As part of this, these actions, the Berry City Diversity and Equity Committee, its former name, was established to act as a catalyst for building equity and inclusion in city government. On other fronts, Jake has been steadfast, has steadfastly asked for accountability on financial and planning decisions, the people's money, acting as a true representative of our residents. So I am here to thank you, Jake, Mayor Hemmerich, tonight, your true public servant who has nothing to gain either in finance, financially, or in status, prestige, or power from serving our community. And rather than being recognized for that service, we have seen a pattern of exclusion, ridicule, bullying, and harassment from some on this council and in this community. ridicule, bullying, and harassment from some on this council and in this community. I hope that the incoming city council understands, as Jake has exemplified, that asking the hard questions, doing your homework, and making informed decisions is the city council's job. So I applaud you, Mayor Hemmerich. You have given so many of us in Barry a hope for a better Barry. And I hope that the incoming folks who I will be voting for can follow in your footsteps. Thank you.
Rachel Van Fleet? And then Joe, yeah, you can queue it up. Gosh.
Can you hear me okay?
I can.
Um-
Rachel Van Fleet, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Hard to follow that. Thank you, Ellen. I just wanted to also say, um, thank you, Jake, for serving, uh, this city. Um, I'm a special educator at Barry Town. I'm Rachel Van Fleet. I don't know if I said that. I'm also the president of the Barry Educators Association. And in this role that I stepped into in the BEA, I've had a chance to learn more about Barry City schools, Barry City, and get to know a lot of the residents. And I really appreciate Jake, your advocacy, your dedication, um, and your support of our public schools. I remember last January when you came to the meeting and spoke against the low budget. And you understand that our public schools need to be fully funded for our students to succeed. And again, I just want to thank you for all you've done, but especially for all you've done for our Barry schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Rachel.
Hi Jake. Joe Shabroy, um, resident of Barry City, a native of Barry City. I don't have anything prepared. I'm really glad that other people who have gone on before me did. And I guess I'd like to say ditto to all that they had to say. And thank you very much. I know you're stepping down as mayor. I assume, presume, and hope that you won't be stepping out of Barry City politics and helping Barry head in a good direction. And I hope, as I've said before to you, to be able to help you with your backyard this summer.
It needs a lot of help, Joe. Jim Dusler.
Hey Jake. Jim Dusler, Ward One. I just want to start by, like Joe, I agree with everything everyone said before me. I just have a memory of you after the flood I wanted to share, when all the roads were closed and you showed up on your fat bike with your helmet kind of crooked and your legs covered in mud and being clear you'd been out all day talking to the community and the people in the city that had been affected by all of that. And I just really appreciate that. And I felt like it was a great chance to get to know you. You still spent 20 minutes talking to us. So I'm still looking forward to everything you're going to do in the future here, too. Thank you.
Thanks, Jim.
My name is Garrett Grant. I live here in Barry City. And I'm here today to thank Mayor Jake for his four years of service to the city of Barry, two years in his capacity as Ward One councillor, and just now rounding out little over two years as Barry City mayor. And it's hard to believe that it has only been four years considering all that we have experienced in our community, pandemics, floods, and some other fun polarizing events I'll keep unnamed. I have been so grateful for Jake's ability to adapt and be present for his constituents, whether by Zoom or email during COVID, or when he rode his bike throughout the city in the days after the July floods. Mayor Jake, I know that you care about our community and making sure it lives up to its potential. But you haven't just told me that, you have shown me through your actions. You have stood up for what's right to try to level the playing field for everyone in Barry. Our success is not in the hands of one person. It's up to all of us. Thank you for working to include new voices in our local government. It's bittersweet to watch you step down from serving on the council. However, I take great comfort in knowing that whatever you choose to do, you will be of great service to the people of Barry.
Infamous Sue Higbee.
I, I actually wrote something. Just give me a half second. First, thank you for being you. I really appreciate it.
If you, plug for SPY, if you haven't seen the recent show, it's excellent. It includes bricks, uh, that survived the flood that have been carved by students in, uh, in Barry schools and at the Career Center, so.
Thank you. Well, what I am about to say downplays the concept of Vermont exceptionalism, and I was cautioned against saying a word about this. But I, I think it would be very challenging to share a unique perspective on Jake's gifts to Barry. My perspective is based on growing up in the Northern Midwest. There is simply nothing like a great guy from the Northern Midwest. Midwesterners are well known for having sincere personalities, boundless work ethics and impeccable characters. Think Eagle Scouts or think of the characters on a Mary Tyler Moore episode, affable, wholesome, and embodying the attributes that make fine leaders. I thank Jake for having these wonderful Northern Midwestern qualities and sharing them while he's been on council. I often miss my people and it's good to know that Jake, a fine guy from Ohio, is here in Vermont. And thanks, Mom, for being such a great leader with Jake's development.
Yeah, and my dad's here, too.
And Dad, thank you too, Dad. I didn't realize that he was here, too. Anyway, it's been really great having you here as a leader. Being a point person with your qualities is just wonderful. Thank you.
Hey Danielle.
Right. When I first met Jake, I was a wetland ecologist and he worked at the city of Milton, city?
Town, town in Milton, yeah.
Milton, um, as a planner. Yeah. And our first interaction really was me telling Jake that this path that he was planning and very excited about actually had to go through wetland permitting and there was a lot more that had to be done.
And a lot more cost.
Yeah, and a higher cost, yes. And instead of Jake being super passive aggressive towards me, like many people would be, um, that I worked with in cities and towns, um, he actually dealt with it very gracefully. And so that left a lasting impression on me. And then we crossed paths again when I moved to Barry City. I'm in Ward One. My name is Danielle Zarsky, sorry. Um, and Jake was Ward One councillor, running for Ward One councillor, and he was going door to door. And it was really, it's the first time I've lived in a place where somebody's actually like come to my door to talk to me and, and hear about the things that I'm interested in. And this was after, of course, I probably sent emails about things and got responses also from Jake and Mel as well, um, which meant a lot to me when I sent these things out. Cause I just figured people are going to ignore me because that's the type of place I grew up in. That's, that's the response we got. So I want to echo what everybody was saying in terms of being responsive and listening, but not just being responsive, but actually reaching out, um, and, and being interested. And I also want to thank you for being supportive in terms of, um, supporting my, supporting me working as sort of doing leadership things in the city, um, which is also hard for me. I didn't grow up in a family that, you know, said women should be also leaders, not just people who kind of listen and support people. Um, so having somebody, um, support me in that and, you know, do the River Access Task Force and be the chair of that has been really great. And I just really appreciate your responsiveness, your ability to listen. And, and you're just like openness and welcomeness, like feeling like I want to stay here. I want to stay in this community because of that. And so I really appreciate that. Thanks.
Let's all just stand up.
Well, this has been very, very well coordinated. I, it's, I'm, I'm speechless. And, uh, it's, it's, it's really been an honor and definitely a challenge, uh, serving the city. But, um, um, but I know, I know my reasons why I did it and stuck true to that. So, and it's, you know, to elevate voices that I felt like weren't being heard in City Hall and to make some changes in, in City Hall that I thought were necessary for the city to, to remain sustainable. So, all right. Yeah, thank you.
We'll see you for coffee.
All right, all right. Stick it on it.
You're not the only person leaving. It seemed like there was a list of people who were no longer going to be-
I'm the only one not running for office.
We're not done yet, Joe. Don't count us out yet, brother.
Damn.
I'll get my word in.
Sorry, not supposed to use swear words. Well, just Jake, I mean, I can't tell you how many times I was talking to my sisters who no longer live in Barry, once just moved back, said, what are you doing? Oh, I'm going to do something. I've got to meet with the mayor. I lived in Boston for 40 years. I never met a mayor.
There's a scale difference there, I think.
I was, I was an involved person. I was an involved person. I wasn't just part of the wall that moved. But, uh, thank you, Jake.
Well, thank you, Joe. Thank you, everyone. Thanks.
Empty's out real quick.
But that takes us to our consent agenda. We have approval in the minutes of the regular city- Oh, sure, sure. Yeah, Danielle.
I didn't want to do it at the same time. So again, Danielle Zarsky, there was a post on Front Porch Forum, um, I think like a week ago or something like that. And somebody had said it would be a good idea to help the city by cleaning out your catch basins. So I'm kind of looking at you, Nicholas. And so a few people have asked me about that and noticed when they went to clean their catch basins, they were clogged with sand. So I told them I'd just ask and find out what to do if that's what they find when they go to clean their catch basin.
Yeah, I think they should, uh, just report them to the Public Works Office. Um, and then Brian will take it from there.
Okay, cool.
Thanks, Danielle.
Thanks for the Gray River cleanup on Green Up Day, too. So. All right, if there are no other items for visitors and communications, that takes us to our consent agenda. We have approval of the regular city council meetings of Tuesday, April 23rd, 2024. Uh, we have the city warrants from the week of May 1st, 2024, and the city warrants from the week of May 8th, 2024. Do we have any licenses or permits?
Nope.
None there. And then we have the authorization of the manager to execute a contract with Aldrich and Elliott for the headworks at the wastewater treatment plant. And the amount of, what was it?
Eighty-six thousand.
About eighty-six thousand dollars. So with that-
Eighty-four eight.
Eighty-four eight. Is there a motion to approve?
There was.
There was a motion to approve. I just want to say, and are there other things that are going to need to happen for the wastewater treatment facility?
Many, many, yeah. This is, um, this is for the headworks project. The headworks is, um, by definition, where, where the intake is, is happening, uh, it's, uh, further investments are really, should wait until we get that headworks done. Because if the headworks isn't done, that's where the rags become a problem. Um, and, um, but yes, this is a big one. This is to, and we, we chose Aldrich and Elliott because, uh, as you know, Wright Pierce has been doing a lot of work for us on the, uh, water, wastewater treatment facility. They are just not working fast enough. Uh, and they're a big firm. Nothing against them, they're very good. They're just a big firm. Aldrich and Elliott is a Vermont-based firm. They can work faster for us. They cut the time down in terms of their planning. So we decided it was, uh, important and it's an important enough improvement to, to switch, switch to this firm.
So that's where the pumps are failing?
That's one, that's, no, that's not the pumps per se. That's further into the processing part. Uh, this is, the headworks is really, the, the problem at the headworks really is the rags.
It's like the flushable wipes that aren't really flushable.
Correct.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Uh, is there any further discussion on the consent agenda? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it, the motion carries, the consent agenda is adopted. That takes us to our city clerk and treasurer report.
Uh, just a couple things. A reminder that the polls will be open next Tuesday, May 14th, from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM at the auditorium. Uh, there still is opportunity to vote early or absentee. Um, we have mailed out or distributed a little over 600 ballots today. We've received about half of those back so far. Um, and we're still, we're processing them every day. People are either coming into the office to vote, uh, or they're calling in and requesting ballots by mail. We are getting, uh, tight with regards to mail because we do have to have all voted ballots back by close of polls on Tuesday. Uh, so we're encouraging people that if we do mail the ballots to them, that they actually bring them back in person. Either they can bring them back to the office, um, until Monday, close of the office on Monday, or they can bring them directly to the polls on Tuesday. Um, and then, uh, the fourth quarter property taxes are due the next day, the 15th. Um, because the city did not, uh, vote on town meeting day in March, um, the, the city day off for employees was moved to May 14th. So most of City Hall will be closed on the 14th, uh, for the, the annual meeting, uh, elections. Uh, however, the clerk's office will be open that day to accept tax payments because it is just before the deadline. So we did want to make sure that people could come in that day, uh, and make tax payments. So, um, I think that's all I've got.
Are there any questions for our treasurer, Dallas? Hearing and seeing none, that takes us to the liquor and cannabis control boards. Do we have any items?
Nope.
On this there, that takes us to item seven on the agenda, the city manager's report.
Thanks, Mayor. Uh, just a couple updates for council. Uh, today, uh, department heads had the flood after action that I had mentioned. We were undertaking, this is, um, a guided flood response with VEM and CVRPC. Uh, we're the first municipality going through this. Um, this will result in a report and plan, um, for next steps to, to work into our operation systems and action plans, um, that we'll, we'll update council with once that's prepared. Um, but just a couple of themes emerged that, they're not surprises, but we really honed in on the mitigation plans, which bristles, uh, bridges, trestle, floodplain, and then another one that we've talked about less, but we have some exposed water mains that, um, became a real vulnerability during the flood. Publics, uh, uh, public safety building access and then culvert upsizing were just big themes, um, today as in addition to operational things like communication, which I think are the contract with Regroup will, will help us with. But we look forward to having a report, uh, to share with the council as soon as it's done by VEM and CVRPC. Um, we applied since the last council meeting for two additional congressionally directed spending grants, uh, through Representative Becca Balance Office. Uh, one was a $1 million to support housing development in the North End. This is for that cluster on Second and Third Streets that, um, those properties have applied for buyout. Uh, they're higher up in the neighborhood and they're still in the floodplain, but we think good candidates for re, uh, redevelopment, uh, and could hold, uh, hopefully 12 units or more, uh, on that site. So that's $1 million to buy those out, prepare the site, uh, and prepare it for a developer. And then $518,000 and change grant to replace, uh, digesters at the wastewater treatment facility. This would be to Councilor Stockwell's earlier question. For the second phase, um, is, um, the headworks then digesters. And so this is, as, uh, the, the plant's currently undergoing the long overdue 20-year review. Um, we applied for funding to do the construction on the headworks from Senator Sanders. That's going to have a, that's a big dollar ticket item. Um, but the digesters, as I mentioned, are, are a big next step. So we can, um, one big advantage would be we can stop trucking sludge to Quebec, um, which they in turn turn into fertilizer and sell back to people in the United States. Um, and then this is, um, this is on top of just a reminder, the other applications that were submitted for congressionally directed spending through Senator Sanders' office, which was, um, matching money for the auditorium, which I know we'll talk about a little bit later, the BOR roof replacement, um, feasibility study for the DPW garage, headworks, as I just referred to, and then, um, money to support the Seminary Street Parking Lot project. Um, and then of course, the state applied for, uh, as Pat Moulton, uh, updated council, she also applied on behalf- And then, of course, the state applied for uh, as Pat Moulton uh updated council, she also applied on behalf of the the state fifty-one point four million dollars to advance North End redevelopment um plans. Uh, another uh update, the assessors uh have sent out letters to residents uh about the reappraisal. Um, and I know that some some folks have been alarmed by these letters, but thi- this is a city-ordered um reappraisal uh due to the level of the CLA. Um, the goal, of course, is to. Common level of appraisal. Thank you, Mayor. Um, the goal is to create fairness and accuracy so that similar homes are assessed at different, at same uh at similar values. So as I mentioned, residents have started receiving them. There's instructions on the letter about whether you want to be home present for your inspection um and what to do to to schedule an appointment. So um, there's a number on the letter. Uh, you can call the assessor's office um at four-seven-six oh-two-four-four. To schedule an appointment. The assessors are also very clearly identified with Berry City badges and their cars are identified with assessor magnetic strips and and uh city sealed as well. So um, and then final update is that uh we expect installation of the City Hall HVAC to begin in the next uh two weeks.
Are there any questions for the manager?
Just wanna say thanks for uh getting that Becca Balance um application done. I know that it was something they need to be turned around quick.
Yep.
So thanks for being diligent on that, getting it accomplished.
On the reappraisal, uh, is is the letter going out to citywide or is it just select property?
It's select. At this point, it's select uh target uh re uh area.
Okay. And so they're, they like built a geography for the city and they're doing it section by section. Okay. Is it mostly in one ward or is it multiple wards or?
I have to double check with them. I don't have, I don't have the the map visualized, but yeah.
If there are no other questions, that takes us to our first item of new business. We have Chief Vale here tonight. Thanks for being here, Chief.
You're welcome.
Yes, man, if you want to swap that out with something a little sturdier.
Gets everybody.
We have our department head meetings in here and you gotta get here quick to shuffle the chairs. All right. Um, I'd like, I'd like to first start off just by uh giving everybody an update on the body worn camera program. Um, as you know, uh, last year we received a grant um which allowed us to pay for the first year of the body worn cameras. We have a ten-year contract. We were finally able to uh roll out full implementation at the beginning of April with those. All the officers got trained. They've been wearing them now for uh just a little over a month. Um, it's going really well. There were a couple hiccups um at the beginning. As with any, any new item, the officers have to remember to turn them on, um, but they've been doing really well. And um, the the usage of that is all under the guise of a state mandated body worn camera policy. So that tells um, there's some prohibitions when we can't turn them on, like we can't just walk around the schools. We can't go um to um like incidents where there's where there's free speech just to do surveillance on uh, you know, demonstrations, th- those sorts of things. So again, um, everything's going really well. If anybody um wants to see a demonstration or anything, I'd be more than happy to do that. I don't have one with me here tonight. Um, I also didn't uh bring a video, but um, I'm sure a lot of folks have seen body worn camera videos on on the news. They are the Axon Body Worn Cameras, which is um pretty much the leader in the nation with the body cameras. Most agencies that use them are using that that body worn camera from Axon.
Chief, if I could just jump in.
Sure.
Uh, I know we we've we talked about your last meeting and just all the policy work that you've been done doing with the Police Advisory Committee, and it's just a commendable amount of work.
And uh, we've been copied on all those policies and it's uh, it's just, it's very, very impressive. The the committee has done eighty-four to date that have have flown through their doors.
Those of us who like rules and procedures and process.
I don't know how the folks always like them. You know, I see the memes, oh, another policy.
I also wanted to thank you for um preparing this uh presentation to the Councilor Stockwell for um asking to get uh for briefing on crime statistics. So we are, we're grounded in reality.
Yeah, since you're bringing up the policies, uh, and I may have already asked this question of you, um, are we gonna move towards Kalia? We can. Um, one of the big concerns with Kalia is it is very costly. But I am laying all the groundwork for that. If the city so chose, every policy that I put forth is based on the Kalia standards. And for those that don't know, Kalia is the excellence in in police standards. And I think it also, because you were down in Hartford, so Hartford actually had their certification for a little while, right? They're they're through and they're in the self-assessment phase, I believe. Okay. And that that does help with insurance, correct? It does. Enough to cover the costs? It it does. Um, usually if there's a lawsuit um that's going to be lodged against um a municipality due to a police incident, um, those that are Kalia accredited are less likely to get sued. And if there is a lawsuit, um, because they're following the standards, it's more likely to have a better outcome. Ten years ago, I tried to get Kalia up here and I just want to say thank you. You're welcome. All right. Um, so this, basically what I did um is I've I've gone with a a trend overview um on how how things are going in the city based on crime statistics. We do have um, a- as you'll see in future slides, it's I've I've given a three-year um average based on on the trends. Um, I'd like to say that Berry does participate in the FBI's unified unified crime reporting uh program whereby we submit all data to what's called NIBRs. It's the National Incident-Based Reporting System. So every every incident that we have that gets logged in our records management system, there's data that comes out of that that gets fed into this program. So that's where all the uh, a lot of the information publicly available comes from. Some of the lower level things here that I'll talk about, like quality of life, uh crimes and issues are not necessarily reported um in that unified crime reporting program. All of this data from the uh FBI standards can be uh tracked through that um web URL that I put up there. And it's easily, it's easily found. If you go and just type in FBI crime data reporter, you can drill down. You can uh choose Vermont, then choose Berry City. And you can compare it with um other municipalities as well. Unfortunately, their online publishing is generally one to two years behind. I think they have um up to twenty-twenty-two on there. Um, I've went through and put twenty-twenty-three on some of these charts for us here, though. So according to the FBI uh definitions, property crimes include burglary, larceny, uh motor vehicle theft and arson. Violent crimes include uh murder, manslaughter. They they call it rape. We we call it sexual assault, robbery and aggravated assault. And then the quality of life crimes, which again, I'm going to talk about uh this evening a little bit, is not necessarily included in that FBI data. But those uh we we like to say include vandalism, disorderly conduct, general disturbances, the loiter- loitering and vagrancy complaints, alcohol-related complaints, drug-related complaints and overdoses. So the property crimes reported, and this is through the FBI data with the exception of twenty-twenty-three, which um comes from our data. Uh, you can see, obviously, you can see where the COVID dip was. You can see some of the incidents arising um that were based on the national uh issues that have have gone on across the country. Um, and we were affected with that as well. So to date, uh twenty-twenty-three, there was two hundred and eighty-seven property crimes. Um, it's up a little bit again from that COVID dip that you can see, but it's down significantly from uh early years, ten years ago. And again, I I broke it down into three-year averages. Um, from twenty-one to twenty-three, our lives, our larcenies average about two hundred and forty-three per year. Burglaries, eighteen per year, motor vehicle thefts, one per year. And to define motor vehicle thefts, if you just take a car on a joyride, um, that's not considered a motor vehicle theft. You have to permanently deprive the owner of that vehicle. So that's what's called grand larceny or motor vehicle theft. Of all the larcenies, all categories have been decreasing each year over these three years, except for retail theft. And you can see in twenty-one, we had thirty-five retail thefts, twenty-two, it went up to forty-one, twenty-three, it's fifty. And as of twenty-twenty-four, as of May third, we have fourteen on the record this year so far.
What's due?
So what would you say about, I know it's really hard because you don't have the figures, but the repeat offenders for things like larceny, you know, over that three-year average, how many would you say, you know, are kind of the catch and relief that happens?
There there is some of that that play into that, the recidivism due to all the uh concerns that we have with uh bail reform and all those reforms. Unfortunately, a lot of the individuals, um, when you call it catch and release, a lot of the individuals get released on conditions of release that basically says you can't, you know, they have a bunch of set conditions that say you have to appear and all this stuff. But it says you can't be charged with a like crime or you can't do this, that, you can't purchase, possess or consume alcohol if it was an alcohol-related crime. When we find those individuals that are perpetually violating their conditions of release, um, not much is done with them, unfortunately. They they go back to court and then they get released on conditions, again, pretty much the same conditions. Um, so it's a constant, constant battle um with what's what's been going on across the country with that. Do you want to flip it? Next slide? Um, this this one shows the violent crimes that are reported. Um, and I I think it's great that they're they're on a downward trend. You know, we had a high of seventy-seven in twenty-eighteen. We're down to thirty-three in in twenty-thirteen. And over the past three years, they've been steadily decreasing.
Excuse me?
Yes.
Do you, do you have a, so there's the COVID dip, but do you think there is something that's hap- what's happening that's making it go down, do you think? What makes a difference?
So a lot of things make a difference. Um, and when you see violent crimes, and and you and I had mentioned this over a email conversation. For instance, like when you take sexual assault, it's, well, it's a horrendous crime and you'll see in another slide. It doesn't necessarily mean that that people are getting assaulted out in the streets and it's it's a violent in nature crime. So by by virtue of the definition, it does fit that category, but it's not necessarily violent. But a lot of things are happening to combat that. We have uh the ability to have more programs put in place. For instance, we have an embedded mental health clinician. So those uh uh incidents that may be mental health related uh that correlate into violent crime, those are being addressed um proactively by having that mental health clinician on staff that can assist us. Likewise, we have a a recovery coach um from the Turning Point to address some of the uh substance-related issues that we work with. Um, and that's through a grant. Uh, kudos to Bob Purvis at the Turning Point for getting that grant. It's allowed us to uh enjoy that. Um, we've also had some other programs that we've been implementing to address those instances. So those all factor into it, but I can't specifically say one thing over another has has caused the decrease.
Thank you.
Amish, you want to go to the next slide here? So again, the three-year averages um in in the violent crime category, sexual assaults, we average twenty-eight per year over that three-year period. Robberies, uh, three per year and aggravated assaults, thirteen per year for this past three years.
Excuse me?
Um, as I mentioned, I would like to add that sexual assaults are predominantly associated related incidents. In other words, people aren't getting randomly assaulted in the streets. More commonly, it's a family member um with a juvenile, like a daycare situation type thing. Those are all considered sexual assaults. And um, it's, they're rarely are there incidents of an unknown offender, i.e. being assaulted in the street randomly. The aggravated assaults that we see are also predominantly associated related incidents. It's generally um either on a domestic issue or it is um, you know, they're they're known associates living together or they're, you know, it's drug-related assault type issue. And again, robberies, while fitting that category, have not fit the FBI definition of violent theft of property. So the robberies that we've had and that we see commonly are the ones where individuals go in and they'll, they they will say they have a gun, but they don't. If they do, it's an airsoft type thing. They never draw it. They will just pass a note or they'll say, give me all your money. Um, so while it is considered a violent crime, it does not fit that actual, the violent theft of taking the property from the individual. Should we go to the next one? And as you can imagine, the quality of life issues here in Berry are by far the most prevalent concern in our community. The three-year average uh between twenty-one and twenty-three, we average uh eighty-one vandalisms per year, one hundred and forty-eight disorderly conducts. We responded to um an average of three hundred and sixty-seven general disturbances, eighteen loitering vagrancy complaints. And out of all of these, one hundred and fifty-two have been alcohol-related per year, one hundred and twenty-five have been drug-related, and overdoses, we've been averaging thirty-nine per year. I also added um about domestic disturbances in Berry because those are extremely high compared statewide. They were high enough. Um, when I got here, I was contacted by the Commissioner, Jen Morrison. She had rolled out, um, I don't know if it actually came out, but they were working on this this hotspot map, heat map that they were doing. And she had contacted me and asked if the um domestic disturbances in our system were accurate numbers because they were abnormally high. And you can see on that three-year average, um, we have about two hundred and forty per year that we go to. This breaks down our overdoses. In twenty-twenty-one, we had thirty-three of them, five were fatal. And by this, I mean reported overdoses. Um, they're not, as you'll see, they're not necessarily always reported. Twenty-twenty-two, we had forty-three with four fatal. Twenty-twenty-three, we had forty with four fatal. Um, in twenty-twenty-four, we had uh so far, currently, we have thirteen with no fatalities, thank goodness. Um, and again, they're not always reported. Um, if Narcan happens to be utilized by an acquaintance, they don't always call us and let us know.
So what a question.
During the Carol.
Sorry, regarding the domestic violence stuff, are there any programs that are being worked on or put into place? Maybe within you or maybe within between you and the school or just different agencies to combat this as much as possible? Because we know the effects of domestic violence on the children and the that really the adverse childhood experiences that they have.
Yep.
Perpetuating that continued cycle. So are there programs or things in place to see that we can work on this and?
We're we're collaboratively collaboratively working with uh Circle in the community. Um, they have what's called the STOP Grant. And we we go and we we apply for that on a uh routine basis. We've had it for many years now. They do a lot of uh advocacy and support in the community based on what you had just said for the families, the family dynamic, the children. Um, we have a domestic violence investigator, uh Todd Protsman, who is is under our employ uh part-time, but he works in the state's attorney's office solely for the domestic violence concerns. We're also, um, we had it where I came from and we we've we've brought it up here as well, the FETI training, which is forensic training specifically, forensic interview training specifically geared towards domestic violence issues. Because we found that a lot of people, um, they may not, I don't want to say they they may not know that they're being abused, but they they're involved in that cycle, so they don't necessarily report things. And when they're being interviewed, more comes out. We've actually found that um more crimes have have come out by just doing the specific interview. Like, uh, we found out that um folks were were being sexually assaulted. And they didn't realize it was sexual assault, if you will, because they thought, you know, they were in that relationship and they thought what what was happening, um, I don't want to say it was normal, but for whatever the circumstances were, they didn't associate that with actually being a having a crime being committed against them as sexual assault.
Yeah, uh, the previous slide, um, I just wondered whether those are unique um incidences or if there is overlap amongst them. Uh, as an example, there's a hundred and fifty-two alcohol-related. Are some of the vandalism disorderly conduct, are they?
Correct. So so by that, i- in our system, we we have little checkboxes on every incident that says whether it's domestic violence related, whether it's mental health related, drug-related, alcohol-related. So a lot of these these crimes, the the boxes were checked. So there's a lot of overlap. Um, I'm just showing the correlation that of all these incidents, that's, we have an alcohol problem.
Thank you.
Chief, one other follow-up on that one. Are those per per, when when we're, when you say we're extremely high, are they high per capita or per total? Because I remember seeing that map from Commissioner Morrison and it wasn't controlled uh for per capita. So of course it.
Yeah, there there was.
More incidents than where she lives in in South Hero.
Yeah, so.
Because we had. Because we had ten times the population.
I, I agree, they're, they're saying it's, it's a relatively high, based on all the folks that are reporting in, that she's garnering all of that data from, across, you know, that spectrum. So we still do have a domestic violence problem, but it, you know, correlating it's not like massive.
Counselor Tocco?
You may not know this, but do you have a sense of post-treatment for domestic disturbances? Whether something is working after there's been a domestic disturbance?
Well, again, that's what our domestic violence investigator is specifically geared towards in the state's attorney's office. When those crimes go through there, he gets his hand on every single affidavit from the county and, and goes through that and makes all of those follow-up incidences. He re-interviews all the victims. So I would, I would hope, I don't have, have that sense of exactly what's working and what isn't, but I, I'm confident that things are moving in the right direction in that area.
Thank you.
Can we go back to the overdoses? So that says thirteen for this year.
Yes.
And we're into May.
Yes.
Is that trending low? Because I.
So a lot of it, honestly, a lot of it's weather-related, believe it or not.
Okay.
As the weather warms up, we're going to see more?
And regarding the no, no fatals, I, I feel like there has been, but maybe I'm wrong.
There hasn't been a fatal as far as overdose this year in 2024.
Were you asking about the trends, Counselor? I mean, we're, we're pretty early in May, so you really want to multiply that thirteen by, by three, which would be thirty-nine, which is actually trending right about where twenty-three and twenty-two.
They generally, they generally pick up during certain periods, you know, obviously, relative to depression around the holidays, they can pick up, when the weather's warm and, and people feel good about themselves and are out partying and, and using those substances, that's when they start picking up.
Steve McKenzie has a question online.
Sure.
Steve?
Yeah, just a quick question, Brad. Are these calendar years or fiscal years?
These are calendar years.
Okay, thank you.
So just in summary, I do want to say, all things considered, based on all these stats, Berry City is a relatively safe community. You know, again, there's a lot of quality life and nuisance crimes that are occurring, but there's, as you can see in the violent crime category, there's, there's not a lot of actual violent crime. That's on the downward trend. So I don't want to give the wrong impression to anybody that, that sees this. We are a relatively safe community. And again, most of our concerns are quality of life nuisance or property crimes that are nonviolent in nature, and a lot of this is based demographically, because we are a blue-collar community with some socioeconomic concerns that parlay's into all of this that we're experiencing. And again, there's a direct correlation between high alcohol and drug use and the quality of life issues and property crimes that we see here. Retail theft has been an issue statewide, and if you follow the legislature, they, they've had two bills that they're putting through, trying to address those, those concerns regarding retail theft. They're making, kind of doing a combination thing where, in a fourteen-day period, if you take the aggregate of the monetary value, and if it reaches a certain level, it becomes a felony. Because they've had a lot of the smashing grabs, where people will go up to Kohl's, they'll just go in, load their cart, and leave, and they're doing that all over the place. So if you do that within a certain time period, they're, they're going to classify that as a felony now. And there's, so they're, they're doing some other things to try to address and curb that.
The particular classes of products that are, are being targeted for retail, is it like luxury?
They'll, they'll do tools, because they can, yeah, they can quickly turn them around. Like, over in Montpelier, the, the Abishans over there was getting hit, where they would just go in, grab a bunch of Milwaukee tools, and out the door they'll go. Kohl's, you're seeing, you know, the electronics and those types of things, out the door they, out the.
Is there any way that you could see the city working on a public service campaign to help curb some domestic violence? We see that that's one of the biggest issues that we face. And I know in some of the classes I've taken with public policy, really, having that, that service campaign has helped in some communities, and I don't know if it's something that the city is able to kind of partake in, to kind of help prevent.
That's certainly doable. We've, I've had experience doing public safety ads. Previously, we, we've done several on bullying where I came from, in the schools, put them out on YouTube. We can, we can certainly do something of that nature here as well.
I think that would be amazing. I mean, we see a huge issue here with domestic violence, and we know that the repercussions are just generationally going to continue to happen unless we can kind of do something. And I feel that, you know, we sit up here constantly and, and talk about things, but, you know, something like this, where we can be saving lives from, from people, from, you know, maybe saving a suicide, you know, saving those kinds of things from somebody, it's priceless, so. Thanks, sir.
Certainly do.
Just following up on Counselor Dearing's thoughts, I'm sure that Mosaic and Circle would be willing to play ball.
Yeah, absolutely. And, and like I said, we work collaboratively with them in that arena, and they've got a lot of advocacy and support that they're already doing now.
Because I think there's like a different, there, there's always that, like, that intrinsic need for trust in these extremely delicate, extremely personal situations. So, so Mosaic and Circle are going to be able to reach certain audiences that we just wouldn't deliver certain messages that would, certain messages will be felt differently if they come, the same message coming from either like the city or the police department versus coming from, you know, Mosaic or Circle.
And there are those, you, you know, how they have, like, Breast Cancer Awareness Month, and they have domestic violence awareness as well, you know, and that's nationally, and that would be the time to put those messages out as well.
Chief, just wanted to thank you again for the work on the policies. I'd be lying if I said it was fascinating reading. But it's, but it's, no, but it's interesting reading, even when, you know, as a layperson, you start reading a policy on how a traffic stop should go. It, it helps bring, bring things into perspective, how that law enforcement officer may be feeling when they pull you over, and they're not quite sure who, who they're pulling over.
Absolutely. And if, if you're reading all the policies, you can see that it, it is quite a lot, you think, when doctors go to medical school, all the things that they have to learn, a law enforcement officer is really no different. When they, you know, they have to make splits, split-second decisions based on all of these policies and all of these laws, it's hard.
But unlike a doctor, they're doing it with very little information.
Correct.
Doctors get to practice, doctors get to study.
Yes.
Law enforcement officers have to make a decision in a split second. So brings me to the second part of the question. You know, not that long ago, we saw some attrition in departments, some of it caused by city councils, some of it caused by other reasons, just age, officers getting older and retiring, and it seemed like morale was definitely affected. How is that, how do you see that in Berry City?
Well, currently, we have five vacancies. We have three in background, so hopefully, they all make it through, and they'll be going to the academy this summer. As you could see from the Officer, Officer Curris that we recently hired, it takes almost a year to go through the academy, go through field training before you're actually what's called solo patrol, and you can actually fill a slot in a schedule. So it, it does have an adverse effect on morale and how things move forward, but we're, we're pounding the pavement in the recruitment efforts, and, and hopefully, we can move that forward.
And if you, I, I wouldn't expect you to know this off the top of your head, but how many officers are we putting through the academy these days on an annual basis? You know, is the, has that number rebounded as well?
For Berry City?
Just in general, in Vermont.
In general? So years ago, they used to only allow like thirty individuals per class.
Right.
Now, because of all the recruitment and retention issues nationwide, and in, in the state alone, they don't turn anybody away, so they'll have a class as high as sixty. I think the highest class was like sixty-two or sixty-five or something like that a couple years ago. So they don't, they don't, if, if you have them, they'll take them just to, to help the agency out. So that has increased. Some of that is on the rebound as well. I liken it to, you know, the, the pendulum is swinging. If you look at history, you know, back in the sixties and seventies, and then the high crime of the eighties and the nineties, had all these bills to address that with the cops programs, and then all these things happened nationwide, where we were going back to where we were in the sixties, and then they, with bail reform and all of this coming out, I think that pendulum, pendulum is starting to swing back, and I, I think, you know, in five to ten years, that'll, that'll be back to where it should be.
Super. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thanks, Chief. Great of you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks so much for doing this. I found it really helpful.
With that, that takes us to an update on the auditorium renovation project.
Thanks, Mayor. So there's a memo in the council packet, just to provide an update on this, this project. So just for, for background, as you know, we were awarded a three-and-a-half million-dollar grant sponsored by Senator Sanders in December of 2022, which was to be the, the federal share of a, of a major upgrade to the facility, which was going to include ADA, ADA access, electrical upgrades, audiovisual improvements, and HVAC, so heating, air conditioning, air filtration, et cetera. The total project at the time that this was submitted was about six-point-three million dollars, and so we had to find a two-point-seven million dollar match. Based on when this was initially awarded, we were, and, and our engagement with USDA, we were directed to find the match by September 2023. Of course, we had that flood in the middle, and USDA has been terrific. They've, we contacted them the, the week of the flood and say, hey, we're, we're not finding that match by September. So what we, we've recently begun, begun, now that we have a budget on the ballot, you know, what, what we told USDA back after the flood was like, let us get a budget, let us know what our capacity is to, you know, do a Vermont bond bank loan. Now that we have a budget on the ballot, we can sort of start to do some planning. We engaged with USDA, and they advised, which I think is a positive development, that we can forego the full match and sort of scale the project back. So use the three-point-five million dollars sort of as the base of the project. They suggest throwing in a, a local match to, to show that we have some skin in the game, and then focusing on a, you know, and I put an example in the memo, on a four-million-dollar scope of work, right? Three-point-five million dollar funded by, by the grant, by the congressionally-directed spending grant, five-hundred thousand dollars of a local match, and then we could sort of proceed with an application in that, in that way, and take advantage of Senator Sanders' grant. So we, we think, on the staff level, think this is a, a good approach to take. It allows us to be more, to spread this out a little bit more, while also taking advantage of the three-point-five million dollars that Senator Sanders gave us, and to make some needed improvements at the facility. What we recommend at this point would be to focus really on the electrical and HVAC upgrades at the facility, which in our opinions are the, the, the highest impact ones, and then, and, and do that as a partial application, get that scoped out, get that costed out, and then resubmit to USDA, that smaller-scale project, and, and go from there. So again, we think this is a positive development, want to make sure that the council agrees. You know, it's going to prolong how long it'll take to do everything, but the electrical and the HVAC really are the, the big-ticket items. We'll still have to do some, some costing out, because this is, you know, the estimates are a little bit dated at this point, but we, you know, wanted to get your, your, your feelings on, on moving forward in this way.
What would you say the numbers are for phase one, in terms of electrical and HVAC upper limit, like not exceed amount for the HVAC and electrical both, really in match funds?
It, it would be, it's, it's, it's hard to estimate, Mayor. You know, if we look back at the original project budget, which was prepared by the ADC, the electrical estimates were one-point-five million, the HVAC upgrades were one-point-seven, so that's already below the three-point-five. We're expecting those to be dated, perhaps not complete. My sense is that, you know, there's not a, a sweet spot that USDA was saying, but they, they liked the idea of a four-million-dollar project, a five-hundred-thousand-dollar match. What we'd try to do, if the council feels, feels comfortable with this direction, is getting some real solid number, numbers on both the electrical and the HVAC, and then if there's some room above that, then maybe taking on a, a chunk of the next, maybe the audiovisual or the ADA access, whichever project sort of gets to, to that sweet spot.
And the source of the funding for the five-hundred K would be a loan or?
It, it could be, it could be whatever the council approves, right? So I suggest, in the memo, it could, it could be ARPA, because we have ARPA. It could be, what the staff was planning to do was a Vermont bond bank loan, which would be a low-interest loan, but it, it would be whatever the, the council approves. We haven't proposed a, a match at this point, because we don't know exactly what the scope will be, but I think both of those would be, could be viable options.
I'll make a motion to authorize the city manager to prepare the phased approach to the auditorium upgrade project. Sounds good to me.
Counselor Tocco?
So the ADA means that there wouldn't be a, ADA access means there wouldn't be like an ADA accessible bathroom under this, in this project?
Possibly not in the first phase.
Thank you.
That's Lozón.
I think it's a very creative idea. I think I, I think I hear Sam sharing a concern about the ADA accessibility, and I share that concern, because as we, as I recall, as we've gotten feedback from customers, from people who have shows there, that was one of the big complaints. So I'm just wondering, I mean, I realize we may be, you know, asking a lot, but I'm just wondering if we should, the HVAC was definitely a biggie. The electricity or lack of electrical capacity was a biggie, and the ADA, those were the three.
The three big problems.
Yeah, those were the three big ones that prevented customers from using the auditorium for specific events, or, I don't want to say forced, but encouraged customers to look elsewhere. So I just wonder if we could, if we could get an update, I, I like your approach, but could we get an update on the ADA bathrooms as well? So we, so we just have something to talk about?
Yeah, absolutely. What, what we'll do is we'll start pricing everything out, and then we can create a, a menu of, of options to go from.
Yeah. But I agree with the approach. I think it's creative, and thank you.
In terms of, like, how would you interpret that motion in terms of, what point would you come back to the, the council with the details? Because, you know, we don't have a budget yet, and electrical and HVAC, obviously HVAC has a lot of long-term operational costs, if you go with oil versus if you go with a pellet boiler, versus if you go with some type of heat, hydronic heat system that runs off solar on the roof, and so that doesn't seem like the numbers are really nailed down. So what, what does this motion mean to you?
This motion means to me that we prepare, we start to cost out all of these different prongs of the project. We come back.
You're unmuted. Where is he?
Alfred.
He took care of it. Thank you, sir.
Yeah, so we would, what we would do with this direction is price out all of these different parts of the project, come back with a proposal to the council that the council could take or not take. Like I said, the four million is a, is a, is a conversation with USDA. It could be three hundred, at three-point-seven-five million, it could be a little bit more than four million, but what we would want to do is prepare a menu for the council to select and authorize that application, and then at that point, we'd also have to authorize where we think the local match is coming from.
Bern Rose?
Hi, Bern Rose. So Higby said to me that the committee had made a commitment to raise a hundred thousand dollars, and so is that included in the match money now? I mean, is that a real thing that, that they are going to follow through with?
It, it depends on if they come through. I haven't seen a dollar of it. If they do, that'd be fantastic, and every, anything that they raise would, of course, offset anything that we would have to find locally.
So if they're, if, if you're proposing this, that they're really aware of your proposal?
Yeah, and the, the committee, the chair of the committee is aware, he and I didn't have a chance to speak, but he got this memo the same time the council did, so they're, I know they're at least aware in their meeting on Wednesday, they have their regular meeting on Wednesday.
And you've done such a And you've done such a good job making relationships sweeter with Berry Town. We talk about the civic center as being a regional resource. It resides within Berry City. However, many of the people who are on the committee, most of them are people who are in, live in Berry Town and who have been invested in the use of, of the auditorium in the BOR. And the Berry Youth Sports is not a Berry City program and that utilizes a lot of that. So if we use some of our ARPA money, money, or we get some kind of a, a loan, can we ask Berry Town to partner with us on that and help pay for some of those things? Because it sounds like they have a feeling of ownership of the buildings and, and the civic center?
We can ask. I'm pretty sure I know what the answer will be. I mean, I, I think to be honest, I would make the argument that the state has a bigger stake in making sure that that building is up to code and it has good electrical and has air conditioning. That building hosted over 300 people from Northfield, Berlin, Montpelier, all around. Berry, of course, after the flood in July and August without air conditioning. So I, I would argue that probably more of a state argument for assistance with the funds than just Berry Town.
So who do we, where do we go with the state to get support for funding?
Possibly VEM would be the place to start.
What's VDM?
VEM, Vermont Emergency Management.
Right, VEM, sorry, I misunderstood. And then just a comment about the front steps. If anybody could fix those front steps a little bit so they weren't all broken. I don't know what it takes to just do a, you know, some repair work on them would be really helpful.
Yeah, I know, I know it's on Rick's list. He's on, he's on here listening tonight. And they've got them painted ahead of the election. So I know that at least even if they're not repaired, they'll be safer for people to, to travel on. Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there a reason that FEMA money is being pursued for City Hall, but not for this project? Since it serves as an emergency management facility?
FEMA money.
Yeah. You're proposing to use money for a city hall renovation that's coming from FEMA, right?
Yeah, because it was damaged in the flood.
Okay, but there was no damage.
There's no damage.
Okay, all right. So that's, that's why that source of money is available.
Correct.
Okay. So at this point, you're just looking to, to continue to explore costing, get real about costing, continue to talk with USDA.
Yeah.
And then come back to the council with the details of the project costs and then first, and then ask for a match source.
Yeah, smaller scale, a phased, longer, longer runway project for the auditorium.
So we have a motion and a second to that effect. Is there, are there further questions or discussion? Just one other thing. I, I do think Bern makes a good point about thinking about some of the enterprise functions and, and maybe the value of having the cemetery, recreation and parking established as enterprise funds. Even if it does require fund transfers as subsidies, it, it, it helps. I, I think that continues to support an entrepreneurial spirit for facilities that serve multiple communities. And so something for a future council to consider, but I do feel like there's value in it. So. All right. With that, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, guys have it. The motion carries. That takes us to a warrant informational hearing for our May 14, 2024 annual meeting election.
Yes, and I'm going to make note of the time. We're required by statute to hold an informational meeting within the 10 days leading up to our annual meeting. It can be held during our, our regular council meeting and it's just an opportunity for people to comment or ask questions about the items that are on the ballot for next week. The warning was included in the packet. The, the sample ballots are posted on the website. So the, the community has an opportunity to, to review the ballots in advance of voting. And so this is just an opportunity for, for questions, answers, input, comments. This is just about how it usually goes.
Berna Rose.
I just want to say thank you, Carol. The organization of our voting has been come so easy. Everybody can vote. And you do everything to encourage people to be involved. They can come to City Hall. I saw people coming in and they did their voting right there. We can pick up ballots. We have places, multiple places to drop them off in the front of the building. I don't know if the front, but we have that box in the back where, which I walked and dropped mine in today. And we can get them in the mail. We can put them back in the mail. We can go up to, to City Hall, I mean, to the auditorium. There are just so many ways. And we can call you up and say, hey, will you please register me to vote? And you would work through that if people don't have access to internet. So you've, I, and I know that you've influenced us all over the state. And so I want to thank you because I have not always been able to vote because of physical challenges. And the work that you've done makes it so nobody should not, there is no one should have a reason for not voting. Thank you.
Thank you.
No other questions on the annual meeting?
I just, you know, before Bern spoke, I really just wanted to make note that, you know, Carol, you are such an amazing, amazing election leader that working these last two years in the elections with you, you're really just very diligent, very detail oriented, making sure that you run a fair and free election. And for anybody that, that would question that, it's crazy. So just thank you, thank you, thank you. And they are allowed to question that, but you do such a great job with transparency that, that Barry is an example of how to run an election and you are that shining example. So thank you.
I really count elections as the number one responsibility of serving as clerk. That, that running those fair, equitable, accessible elections is, is my paramount reason for being. Oh, thank you.
Yeah. I mean, if we're going to start talking about Carol, 14, 14 years and 16, well, 16 for you, but 14 for me. Working with you on the elections, it's 100% accurate. Never doubted any, any, anything you've done and you're amazing.
And I've been blessed with an incredible pool of volunteers and people to, who have worked over the years. I've had people who, you know, have since retired because I have been here for 16 years. But, and then new people have come on board. We never have problems finding people to work at the polls. We've got a great group of people who, who love to serve. I've got a great couple of people who arrange all my election workers every year and I really appreciate them. And yeah, no, we're, we're, we're very fortunate.
I realize I misspoke when Joe said, were there other people? And I said, I was the only one not running for reelection.
That's all right.
But there's, absolutely. Yeah, you're also one of those. So 16 years.
And Carol, whoever, whoever is sitting in the center seat is going to miss your council. Because I, I remember countless times during my services, Mayor, that Carol would tap her pen, which meant you were either moving on the wrong side of ordinance, moving on the wrong side of charter, or your math was wrong. But she would do it in a very kind way and then you'd stop and you'd look at her and she'd take over the show. So I think we're, we're certainly going to miss that. Carol, for a long time I was in denial. I went out and got a petition because I wasn't going to let you give up being city clerk and treasurer. Damn it, this is my city and I want the best for it and you're the best. So that's how it had to be. And, but it wasn't to be. And then of course, when no one filed a petition, then I'm like, okay, well, I only need 30 people to write for city clerk and treasurer. But that wouldn't be fair. Change sometimes is hard, but change is inevitable. And I've taken a lot of comfort in the last two weeks, knowing that your service to Berry City isn't over. Your service is, your service is just going to take a different form. And I know that this city is, you know, that in terms of elections, I'm hopeful that you get elected to the BCA because that would be something, you know. But like I said, I know your service to the city isn't over and I take a lot of comfort in that. So whatever you decide to do next, I know you're just a phone call away. Let me know because I'm your biggest fan and I will be a huge supporter.
Thank you.
So Carol Dawes, we didn't do this for you. Mainly because I was still in denial right at that moment.
They had to get me there by tricking me, so.
So we've had our hearing. Here we go. We're good.
So that takes us to the last item, the Service Master is the name of the contractor. The project is a restoration of City Hall and the, I think the dollar amount of the contract was 85,000?
116.
116. Okay, but the quote was for 145?
No. Well, they may have been, but we, we're not doing the full quote. So what we're, what we're paying, what, what the city has contracted them to do is this 116,000 dollars worth of work.
Okay. And so that's an amount that would be coming. What's the source of the funds for that?
So it would be a combination. So we would, the first, the first cost would be paid by insurance. We don't know how much yet because this is part of the statewide pool that we'll be going through passive. And since this building is in the flood plain, it's combined with every other passive insured building in the state. So we, we don't know. And then the balance is covered by FEMA. There will be some parts of this that may, may not be covered and that'll be based on our, our fights with FEMA about it. For example, we believe that we shouldn't have carpeting down there because there's a good chance there'll be water again down there. So we're going to put an epoxy covered floor. And by the way, that's where, you know, the sewer department guys come in to meet with Brian. So we shouldn't have carpet, period, even if it was on the first floor in that office. So will FEMA cover that? It's a big question mark. We're going to fight for every dollar of it. But we think that it, the right thing to do, for example, down there is to put an epoxy floor, even if FEMA doesn't pay for it.
Except for the source of, if there, if it's not covered by FEMA in passive, is the, what's the identified source of?
It'll become general fund, capital fund. It'll become one of those, one of those sources. Yeah.
Make a motion to execute the contracts.
Second.
For Service Master and Aldrich and Elliot.
Motion in second. Is there any further discussion or questions?
This will be back for ratification at the next meeting?
Yes, it will.
Just wanted to make sure.
And are there window replacements?
The Aldrich and Elliot, well, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. The Aldrich and Elliot contract, well, not, not, not Service Master.
Okay, that's right, because we voted on that once before.
And are there window replacements that are involved?
No, not for, not for, no.
All right, nothing to the exterior. The structure is all interior.
It's all interior.
Which is office four?
It is the director's office.
Thank you.
All right, we have a motion in a second. If there's no further discussion or questions, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, guys have it. It takes us to upcoming business. So the next first council meeting, I, I assume you're probably going to be doing some.
Be LCT training.
Yeah, LCT training and those things like that. Anything else that, the preview for?
I believe BADC is scheduled for a quarterly update. MA is going to start coming to do regular quarterly updates. So she, her first one will be on the 21st. Believe we have our first round of the council's look at the, the fee schedule, which has to be implemented by the end of June. That has to be published in the paper. So those two items I know for sure will be on the agenda on the 21st as well. We're also probably going to kick off an ARPA process, knowing that we have till December 31st to obligate. So we have some decisions to make with ARPA. And so if those don't come the 21st, it'll be the, the following week after, the following meeting after.
Are there any other members that want to preview items for the new council?
I do. And I'm sorry, Nicholas, but I want to override you on your decision for Mrs. Chase. So there was, there's a, a long history of someone that's been coming to City Hall and since the flood. Apparently the city did some work and they never fixed the fence. And she's been coming yearly and no one's ever, she's been told that they, it was going to get fixed and nobody ever fixed it. And this year she was told that it's not going to get fixed. It's, I know it's been a long time, but I, it's been 10 years. I know it's been 10 years, but to me, it just feels the right thing to do.
Any other items to preview for future meetings?
They took down the fence and they, they, the way that they put it up, this is all according to her. It, it went up inappropriate, not correctly.
We'll be talking about it in the future. Okay. And then, you know, Nicholas, I've been talking with Pat and it doesn't appear, you know, we need about $100,000 for pre-engineering work in the north end. And that money just isn't out there. You know, she can't seem to find a, a state pot of money from which she could draw. She's been looking and I mean, that work is important, as you know, that work is important to flood mitigation and it also supports some of our buyout decisions. So is that, I think that's something that a future council should be addressing. Perhaps you mentioned, you, you know, you know, you mentioned ARPA funds. Perhaps ARPA funds would be an appropriate use for that, perhaps not. But the sooner the council has, has a discussion about that, the better because that pre-engineering work supports so many decisions that a future council is going to have to make.
With that, we have a roundtable and then we have an executive session just for personnel today. So I'll start on the, on the wings, Councilor Lozan.
I'm good.
Council Deering.
I'll pass.
Mr. Stuckel.
I had a great greenup experience. It was great getting out there and making the city a little better and solving some problems, at least briefly by hauling away stuff. I also attended the Jedi presentation at the BADC Economic, First Economic Summit. I thought that was a great start and it was a good presentation and I think it touched a chord for many people. And with that, I'll pass.
Come on, Bill.
I pass.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, you know, we have not always agreed on all of the issues, but on the ones that we have agreed, I think that, you know, we, we've gotten some really good work done together. So I appreciate that. And to Councilors Booten, Deering and Lozan, we voted together even less, I think, than the mayor and I did. But I think I've, you know, I've at least shared a laugh with each of the three of you over the course of the year. So whether you're back or not, I appreciate that as well and I'll pass.
Thank you. This weekend, they had glow up to blow up and it was a lot of fun. I just want to say how proud I am of my niece for putting that together. It's, it's wonderful to see her just do it because she wants to bring smiles to people and it's just.
Photo in the paper.
Yeah, it's, it's awesome. And I'm just really proud of her. And hopefully next year, other folks jump in besides majority of my family. It was, it, it would, folks come down, anybody's welcome to, to dawn a costume, not. Yeah. So I'm just really proud of her, Alicia Rebuffchuk, just throwing it out there. And that, I'll pass.
Well, this is my last meeting and it has been a great honor to serve as mayor and definitely one of the more challenging things I've ever undertaken. Ran out of sense of obligation to the residents, starting with the Camp Street neighborhood and, and learning so much more about this amazing city full of truly amazing people with so many diverse talents. I, you know, I never really planned when I moved. I, you know, I never really planned when I moved here that I would jump right into sitting up here into this fray. But, but I saw the need for it, and, and, and one of the accomplishments I, I hope I would be most remembered for, wasn't mentioned tonight, was long-term capital planning and financial controls over that. And it feels good to know how far we've come in that regard of your leadership, Manager Charlie Castro. And this, this role has pushed me, and, and I think it would push anybody who sits up here in, in, in ways to, to grow and to test your values. And, and, and taking on that role. It's, well, I'm glad, I'm, I'm glad, I've glad I've done it. It hasn't always been easy, but I'm, I'm glad I've done it. And, and I know that there are so many active people stepping up to serve the city in new ways. And I hope this council and future councils give them an opportunity to make contributions in an open and accessible way. And it's been a hell of a year. I've, you know, I've been rear-ended and have had water in my basement for the past like eight months, and finally the water table dropped down. And I lo, I'm really looking forward to having more balance, restoring my well. And I have some exciting projects underway that I'll, I'll keep to myself, but I'll certainly be around. This is the place I've chosen to call home, and I'll, and I'm in my early 40s and getting better from respiratory, ongoing respiratory issues since October. So I look forward to, to remaining active in Berry City. And with that, I'll pass.
Motion, I don't know if we have to do motion for findings, but we will.
Yeah.
We do. The law hasn't changed as last I checked.
I don't know. I get, on the school board, I get into trouble because apparently for personnel, you don't have to, according to them. But with that, I'll make a motion for findings.
Second.
As a motion in a second for findings to, for it to enter, or to, findings on personnel. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Motion go with executive session to discuss personnel.
Yay, Jay! Yay, Jay!